Welcome everyone to the September meeting of the Austin P Board of Trustees. Before we officially kick things off, there are a couple of people I'd like to recognize or welcome. First one is Dr. Elaine Berg. Dr. Berg is our new faculty trustee and welcome, and we're thrilled to have you on the board this year. Second is Molly. Molly was not here this morning. Molly Howard is our student trustee. Molly was actually in Nashville this morning, running on behalf of Austin P Cross Country. Made it back to the meetings for this afternoon. So, welcome back Molly. I might be remiss if I didn't say thanks and give some recognition to Carol Clark on my my left, your right. Carol is, Dr. Clark is the Board Secretary. This is her first official meeting. And these meetings, there are a million things that go on behind the scenes, and these meetings don't go off without a hitch. Or if there are any hitches, it's on me, not Carol. So Carol, thank you for all the work you do to put this together and welcome.
Thank you. My pleasure.
And with that, let me put you to work by asking you to call the roll.
Yes, sir. Trustee Atkins.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Canata.
Here.
Trustee Howard. Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee May.
Here.
Trustee McGuinness. Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here. We have a forum. Please note that there are items on your agenda that need to be adopted. Before I call for a vote, are there any items that you wish to be extracted from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move for adoption of the agenda, including the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. And the agenda is, all those in favor, sorry, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. The minutes for the June 4th, 2021 Board Meeting were circulated in advance. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are approved. And thank you. And at this time, I'd like to recognize President Licari, who will introduce today's campus spotlight.
Thank you. The campus spotlight is on the strategic plan. And we have with us Elaine Lean and Danell Whiteside, who will give a presentation about the strategic plan process that has just begun on campus. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm happy to see all of you virtually, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to participate. I've been in full mom mode. As you all know, I had a new baby boy in July. So, this is a welcome reprieve to be able to sit somewhere and not have to hold a baby. So, thank you to, thank you to Dr. Licari for this opportunity to share the process that APSU will undertake this year, along with my colleague and co-chair, whom I've really leaned on, Dr. Emily Lean. Let me also thank the Strategic Planning Committee for agreeing to engage in such important work. This fall, the Strategic Planning Committee will begin examining Austin P's mission, vision, and values with the goal of a completed revision by the first part of November. The revision will be presented to the APSU Board of Trustees in December. This opportunity allows us to explore our why, why do we exist, envision our what, what will we become, and enact our how. How will we do it? And that's exciting work. Spring semester will bring Strategic Planning Committee back together to align our strategic plan with the revised mission and vision, and to refine our pillars, goals, and tactics. Committee members and subcommittees will work together to complete assessments, gather feedback, and define our wildly important goals. That process should be completed by May 2022 in anticipation of presenting the refined strategic plan to you all in June of 2022. So now I'll kick it off to Dr. Lean to provide more details.
Our inaugural meeting in August 24th, 2021, brought the committee together to share the committee chart, provide a timeline for work, and to get to know one another. VP Whiteside joined us via Zoom to open the meeting and provide expectations for what the group would build together in the process. President Licari also joined us to share his thoughts on the process and provide a high-level overview of his proposed pillars or big buckets. President Licari shared the following big buckets from his faculty conversation speech. Strategic enrollment is an integrated approach that encompasses all parts of the admission and enrollment continuum, and embraces student success for retention and persistence to graduation, and successful career outcomes for each student. Everyone at Austin P is an important part of a student's journey from admissions to graduation and entry into their career. Academic strength embraces the uniqueness and distinction of the Austin P education experience. Robust and relevant academic programs, compelling and engaging student experiences, and meaningful scholarship in and out of the classroom are part of the distinction. The current process will help us define and share what makes the educational journey at Austin P State University a unique, distinct, and valuable student experience. Institutional vitality encompasses the community aspects of the university: student affairs, athletics, advancement, alumni, and government relations. Other aspects of institutional vitality are our economic footprint and the visible regional partnerships of our institution. Our institutional vitality strengthens the region's prosperity and supports our student career and life goals. Austin P is intrinsically tied to our military-related students and families. Nearly 25% of our enrollment is military-affiliated. Our commitment to the military remains part of our planning for programs, outreach, and student success. Professional development and career paths allow Austin P to recruit and retain good people. Employee success includes things like building a diverse supportive culture, creating an equitable competitive compensation plan, and providing an effective process for employee success. The integrated planning approach for revising the current plan will focus on awareness of other planning processes and initiatives on campus, and include multiple stakeholders. For example, academic affairs planning will be key to academic strength and strategic enrollment. President Licari emphasized that these five areas are not a directive for the process, but rather a starting point. The function of any university encompasses these colors, and the way they are incorporated and supported in planning is driven entirely by the committee and campus. President Licari also discussed the incorporation of our diversity goal, the previous plan, into every facet of the new goals and objectives. President Licari wants to ensure that diversity is actualized on campus in a meaningful way and not left as the job of a single area, as a lead living breathing commitment to support diversity at all levels of the university. Dr. Cronly, Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs, shared that academic affairs is currently going through a strategic planning process to define the mission, vision, and values of the Academic Affairs Division. The mission and visioning process will be occurring at the same time that the university's strategic planning committee focuses on the university's mission, vision, and core values. Furthermore, Dr. Cronly will lead the efforts for two of the five university pillars mentioned a few moments ago. The two university pillars that will be designated by the Academic Affairs Division are the strategic enrollment and academic strength pillars. Provost Cronly provided details of the academic affairs process and highlighted that part of the expected outcomes would be the strategic enrollment plan, the plan for student success that would build academic strength. As part of the process to gather information from internal and external stakeholders, three surveys were commissioned by the President's Office and deployed by Dr. Andrew Luna in decision support and institutional research. They consist of a faculty and staff survey, a student survey, and a community survey. These surveys contain 10 questions specific to each stakeholder group. The surveys will provide the Strategic Planning Committee with essential data to support the planning process and help us begin to define who we are as an institution. Our mission is who we are. We cannot begin to attempt writing our mission statement without first looking at key data, along with honest feedback from our stakeholders. The current mission and vision are 15 years old. Much has happened in the world, and in Austin P since our creation. We must begin with defining our purpose, our why. We must seek to understand ourselves and our values, to communicate clearly to our stakeholders how we will enact our purpose. We will define and share what makes an education in Austin P a distinct value proposition for our students.
That was a brief overview of what we plan to do, and it seems like an ambitious undertaking, no doubt. But it is the most important undertaking that I think that we can attempt in this current environment. Strategic plans are not just set and forget it. It's not something that we're going to just put on the shelf once we're done. They're tied to the continuing success of the institution and must be revised consistently to respond to the changing environment around us. The previous plan was written as a 10-year plan, which is a practice that is uncommon in university planning. So, this revised plan will span about five years and will contain annual checkpoints to adjust our goals and metrics. The exciting process is, the exciting part is that this process will see Austin P through our Centennial Jubilee in 2027. And so, it's exciting to embark on a wonderful journey with so many fantastic people. So, I'm happy to take questions, or Emily, Dr. Lean can, or Dr. Licari. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Well, if there aren't any questions, I would just like to make sure that I give a good shout out to Dr. Lean and and Danell. You know, this is something that I've added a lot to their plates. Emily, Dr. Lean, of course, is serving as the Associate Dean in the College of Business, and so is very, very busy. And Danell, obviously, has a lot on her plate, especially as a new mom, but she's got a career of her own to get back to as well. So, I really appreciate the work. Dr. Bailey is sitting here in the audience as well. She's provided a tremendous amount of leadership and help along the way. So, this is a collaborative process. You know, the best plans are written in a way so that campus has bought in to the entire plan as it's being developed, and has some ownership of the plan, so that they're excited about implementing it and hitting our goals. And so, I'm excited that the process is underway.
Thank you very much, Dr. Licari and team. A great update on the strategic plan. Thank you, Danell. Dr. Lean as well. I'd now like to recognize Trustee Miller, Chair of the Academic Affairs Committee, to give a report on their committee meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The committee reviewed and approved the following action items, which were on the board's consent agenda today. Revisions to Policy 1011, student and faculty participation in development of campus policies and programs. Revisions to Policy 1020, confidentiality of student records. Provost Maria Cronly presented six information items related to degree and certificate awards by type and academic year, program productivity report, preliminary fall enrollment, military student enrollment, update on Bachelor of Science, National Security Studies, and program development opportunities. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to recognize Trustee Jenkins. Give a report on the Student Affairs Committee meeting this morning.
Chairman O'Malley, the committee renewed the following information items. There is a case in center, it's been like recruitment and retention. And that concludes my lengthy report.
Thank you very much, Trustee Jenkins. Now, I'd like to recognize Trustee Canata, who will give a report on her audit committee meeting this morning.
Thank you, Chairman O'Malley. We had an amazing audit committee meeting this morning. We, the committee reviewed and approved the internal audit salaries and budget for fiscal year 2022. The audit committee also listened to presentations regarding informational items. The internal audit reports released between May 11th of this year and August 25th here with a list of outstanding audit recommendations. The Office of Internal Audits Year and Report for Fiscal Year 2021 was also. That concludes my report of the Audit Committee meeting held this morning, September 17th, 2021.
Thank you, Trustee Canata. Now, I'd like to recognize Trustee Atkins, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give a report from his committee meeting, committee meeting this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm pleased to to report my report from this morning's Business and Finance Committee meeting. The committee reviewed and approved the following action items that will be presented for your review and action in a few minutes. One, consideration of Lot 7 Parkin Project. Two, consideration of Downey Football Office Project. The committee also reviewed and approved two action items that were on the board consent agenda today. Consideration of Policy 1017, grievance and complaint procedures for employees, and consideration of Policy 1023, compensation. The committee also reviewed the 2021, 2022 budget update and discussed the current university reserve funds. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Trustee Atkins' report contains action items that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee Atkins, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. Consideration of Lot 7 Parkin Improvement Project. You have before you a copy of the Lot 7 Parkin Improvement Project. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the Lot 7 Parkin Improvement Project.
Thank you. You've heard the motion on the Lot 7 Parkin Improvements Project. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Trustee Atkins?
We also have before you a copy of the Downey Football Offices Project. A direction of the committee, I move to approve the Downey Football Offices Project, Chairman.
Thank you. You approved the motion on the approval of the Football Offices Project. Again, since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was carries. Thank you, Trustee Atkins' report. Chair. Now, I'd like to give a report on the Executive Committee meeting that was held this morning. Action items, the committee reviewed and approved revisions to the following policies, which were on the board's consent agenda today. Policy 1006, diversity. Policy 1007, uniform procedures for cases subject to the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act. Policy 1008, litigation hold notice. 1009, policy regarding legislative proposals. And Policy 1018, Board of Professional Development Policy. The committee also reviewed and approved additional action items, which I'll now present for your review and action. You have before you proposed revisions to the Board of Trustees' bylaws. By direction of the committee, I move that the board approve the revisions to these bylaws. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McGuinness.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. You also have before you proposed revisions to the Executive Committee Charter. By direction of the committee, I move that the board approve the revisions to the Executive Committee Charter. Again, a second is not required, since it's a motion of the committee. Is there any further discussion or any discussion on this? Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Canata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McGuinness.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes. By direction of the Executive Committee, I move that the annual evaluation of president for the 2020, 2021 year be waived. An evaluation based on the school year of 2021, '22 be completed after June 30 of 2022 and presented to the full board at the September '22 trustee meeting. Again, since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The question is on waiving the annual evaluation of the president for 2020, 2021. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The current board chair and vice chair are completing their second term in their respective offices. The board needs to elect a chair and a vice chair to serve in the upcoming two-year term. By direction of the Executive Committee, I forward the nomination of trustee Billy Atkins for appointment to board chair. Are there any additional nominations for the position? Hearing none. Trustee Atkins is the sole nominee for board chair. Therefore, I move to appoint trustee Atkins as the board chair to serve a two-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of trustee Atkins for board chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and trustee Atkins is elected board chair. Congratulations, Billy Atkins. Can I make a comment? I don't think so, Billy. You're not chair yet. Absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman. It certainly is an honor for me to be elected as second chairman of this board. I have a lot of work to do, of course, following the leadership that Mike has given the university and the board of trustees since our beginning. Austin P has certainly made great strides under Mike's leadership, and I promise to continue to do the same to the best of my ability. I have enjoyed my involvement with the university for the past 50 years in some fashion, and in any way I could serve. I have often said that the entire Clarkville, Montgomery County, and surrounding area truly succeeds because of Austin P and Fort Campbell. They are the driving force in our region. And I know people all over the state wishes they had a university like Austin P, and they wish they had a military base like Fort Campbell. They're, these two institutions are so important to our region. It is my hope that the board will continue to be a sounding board for President Licari as he leads the university, and for approvals and financial support for the university. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Atkins, for those kind comments. And I know my colleagues would join me and knowing that you'll be an outstanding board chair. Congratulations.
Mark.
Gary.
I just want to say thank you, Michael O'Malley, for all that you have done since this board was established. Navigated through a new board setup. You've navigated through a pandemic. You've navigated through the movement on of President, former President White, presidential search in the middle of a pandemic, and the successful hire of President Licari. All with grace, servant leadership, and humility. So, I thank you very much.
Very much, Gary. That's very kind. Thank you. Thank all of you. Very kind. Back to work. By direction of the Executive Committee, I forward the nomination of trustee Don Jenkins for appointment to board vice chair. Are there any additional nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. Trustee Jenkins is the sole nominee for appointment to vice chair. Therefore, I move to appoint you, Don Jenkins, as board vice chair for a two-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of trustee Don Jenkins for appointment to vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and trustee Jenkins is elected vice chair of the Austin P State University's Board of Trustees. Congratulations, Don.
I'd just like to say I look forward to serving with Billy. I love Austin P, always have. And I like, Carrie, I want to thank you for your incredible efforts. Nobody knows how much time that you spent behind the scenes. All you've done for Austin P and your passion, and it's always intense for this college. And we look forward for several more years of having you on the board, and let's give him a standing round.
Austin P will be in the meeting. I would like to add, it's not in the script, but Carol will kick me. We will make, appointments will be made for committee chair positions prior to the December meeting, at which time they'll be voted on. Is that correct? So, thank you for that. We need to set the calendar now for meeting dates for 2022. As a reminder, the Focus Act requires the board to have four regularly scheduled meetings per year. The following dates are presented. Spring would be March 18th. All of these in 2022, obviously. Summer meeting at on June 10th. The fall meeting, September 16th. And the winter meeting, December 2nd. I move that we accept the proposed meeting calendar for 2022. Is there a second? Thank you. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to those dates? Thank you. The motion carries. Now, I'd like to invite Gerald Harrison, Austin P's Athletics Director, to provide an update on the Department of Athletics. Gerald?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity, as we always say, to spread the gospel of Austin P Athletics in such a dynamic setting. And we'll start every meeting like we do in the Athletics Department. That is truly a great day to be a go. And it's truly an honor to serve as the director of athletics at this great institution. And I look forward to sharing an update with you today. Biggest thing we want to figure out is this machine. All right. So, we've helped this time the dawn of a new day. And we got a lot of stuff going on in athletics that we're very excited about, starting with the three new coaches that we have, that we have hired in men's basketball, women's basketball, and in football.
Roger. Yeah, this is. Need to click on it. Thank you. Click on the picture, please. Go back to the left side.
And part of the reason we call it the dawn of a new day is because we're relaunching our brand in the Department of Athletics. This starts with what we call our relentless pursuit of excellence. We want our goal, as always, to be competitive and successful, both on the field and in the classroom. This past year, we've accomplished that. You look at 350 student athletes, 50%, 50.2% technically of them had a 3.0 GPA, while we also claim OVC championships in tennis and in beach volleyball. So, we're doing it in both ways, and that's part of our pursuit. Our department has to be passionate, and will continue to be passionate about Austin P and Clarksville, Montgomery County, and recognizing success, and we're happy about what we've done, but realize that we're never satisfied with our current position. and recognizing success, and we're happy about what we've done, but realize that we're never satisfied with our current position. Scotty Walden is our football coach, and anybody who's ever met Scotty and spent time with him, he is not short on energy. Uh, we hired him from Southern Mississippi where he was the interim head coach. He is the youngest, uh, division one head football coach. He's still got three years to hold that title if something changes at thirty-one. Uh, we've won three consecutive games over ranked opponents and seven out of our last ten in the sport of football. Uh, so we're really excited about the direction of Coach Walden, and he's taking our, and he's taking our football team. Brittany Young, Brittany Young is our women's basketball coach. She came to us from Mississippi State University. Uh, her tree pedigree came from Old Dominion and the University of South Carolina, where she was mentored and tutored under Don Staley, uh, the Olympian and national championship coach. Uh, she's tough, she's smart. A lot of people let her, she's a little, she's a little short, so everybody can think she's really quiet, but she's not. And she's very aggressive, especially on the recruiting trail, where she's a dynamic recruiter, and I look forward to seeing what her student athletes do this, this winter. And then the next, we have Nate James, who's our men's basketball coach. When we started our search for our men's basketball possession, we wanted to find a champion. We wanted to find someone that was a positive force in the lives of our young men and who was an excellent recruiter. Obviously, with Nate James, you got a three-time national champion. Who studied, uh, for ten years plus under, under Mike Shesky, the winningest coaching college basketball. So we felt like, well, our program needed Nate was the right coach at the right time for Austin P. Another thing that has us really excited about our, our athletics department is new partnerships. Obviously, we all know about F and M Bank Arena that we partnered with Montgomery, Clarksville, Montgomery County. Only see Mayor Durndt there uh, to build. It's gonna be an unbelievable facility, the best around. Uh, we will be able to hold six thousand folks for men's and women's basketball. Our basketball teams will live there. Uh, their offices, locker rooms, and practice facility will all be located in that, in that facility. Uh, we have a new relationship with the Nashville Predators and SSNE Entertainment, which is gonna bring us a great, uh, marketing, help our ticket sales, but also give us a relationship in the middle of the state and in the state capital. Uh, and then Miss South Ford. Uh, we, we just partnered with, uh, do, do military, who works the military section in, in for Terror Stadium. So Section K will be known as the Miss South Ford Military Hero Section, where there will be four hundred tickets available each game for military personnel to come support the GOs and bring their families out. So we are really excited about those new partnerships that we have. I mentioned a little bit about F and M, F and M Bank Arena. Uh, owned by the county, operated by the Nashville Predators, which is also known as SSNE, uh, and leased files to P. State University, uh, for, it's our home for the next thirty years. And everybody's working really, really hard to make sure that when you walk in that arena, that you know that that's the governor's home. Uh, it has had great, uh, it's been a great benefit to us already, uh, with recruiting. I use it to recruit Nate and Brittany. Uh, we drove around in the dark down, down there to see the hole. Uh, and now we got some steel beams on it, so it'd probably been easier to recruit. And in fact, we have, we have young folks coming to visit our campus now from different states uh, who want to play basketball for us, and we take them down to F and M Bank Arena, and we're so excited. Practice facility, hydrotherapy, which we don't currently have, so that's a new area for us. Training room, locker room, and our coaches' offices. And the expected opening date for that will be in the winter, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, J. R. January, two thousand and twenty-three. But I keep putting the pressure on, so I'm saying winter, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, so we can keep that going. One of the other partnerships that we have that doesn't get a lot of advertising is with our great university, especially on the medical side. And when you look at the folks in art and what they have done uh, to help us out through the COVID, uh, to the COVID challenges. Our university provides us with testing, vaccines are available for staff, student athletes. We have to test our student athletes multiple times a week in surveillance testing, and the cost of that alone is unbelievably expensive. Uh, and average, when we had to do it in the fall before the lab was up, it cost us around a hundred and twenty dollars a test. And now, thanks to, thanks to our university, thanks to the investment in, in testing and vaccines, we don't have that cost. It's a shared cost with the university. It's not nearly that. And so we're, that is a great partnership, and I want to thank publicly all the peoples, people over there. If we would not have been able to do it, been able to play in the spring, uh, been able to play, uh, those three games in the fall, or what we're doing now without their help. Uh, our goal for the athletics department is to have seventy-five percent of our department vaccinated. The only way we can guarantee that we don't have to forfeit games is to keep our young people on the field. And so that's our goal. We're not quite there yet. Um, we can't mandate it like some schools. I know you read about that have mandated vaccinations. We can't do that, but we're willing to win. Our student athletes are being educated about the process and, and they're making those decisions, and we're really excited about it. We're closely following the CDC, NCA, uh, state and county, and, uh, county guidelines as we go through this testing, uh, process and best practices and procedures. I always talk about challenges and opportunities. So the upcoming challenges, so name, image, and likeness, you've heard about a lot lately, probably. This means that our student athletes can make profit off of their name, image, and their, and their likeness. Basically, they can use their, uh, Twitter feeds or their social media, or they can advertise for businesses and companies, uh, to generate their revenue, because, and this is new to the NCA. For the longest time, student athletes did not make money this way. So when this law passed, it did change some things. Uh, we have twenty-one student athletes that currently have contracts with, uh, other companies in areas where they do marketing, commercials and stuff for them, uh, and that will grow. But we're really excited that they get, I believe that they should be able to have this opportunity, and I'm glad that they do. Uh, and it's going really, it's going really, really well. Our state law protects us in a lot of ways. Uh, the state of Tennessee's law doesn't allow, uh, you, student athletes to make money off of alcohol, tobacco, and, and, and other things like that that are negative. So we're kind of protecting, every state's not that way. The state of Tennessee does protect us, so all we have to do is monitor. Uh, we have to monitor what they, what they're doing. On the next, uh, on the next slide, what you'll see is what we're doing about it. The number one thing we have to do is educate, expose, and monitor. We have to educate our young folks that they understand that just because somebody is paying you, you have to protect your brand. You have to understand the tax laws, you have to understand, uh, percentages, because now somebody say, yeah, I'll help you, but they want to charge them. You know, they're gonna charge them above the three or five percent, so we gotta help them protect their money. And then we have to monitor, uh, what's going on, so we can be aligned with the NCA rules, because there's things we can't still do on those sides. So if a company wants to come sign a student athlete, student athlete comes to us, and they present their contract, tell us what's going on, we approve it, make sure they don't violate any, any of the law for the state, NCA or our university. And then after five days, they're approved, and they go on and do those commercials or what have you. We've been fortunate, we've had, uh, Austin P. alums offer to help educate our student athletes about taxes, because many of them have not done tax returns. And so they are gonna help them with their tax returns and get started, and we're really proud of that partnership a- as well. Going on, the next challenge that we have to deal with is the one-time transfer rule. Now, this is a tough rule for college athletics and very new. Essentially, any student athlete for any reason can transfer and leave, leave Austin P. Uh, if you look on the, uh, if you look at the PowerPoint in front of you, we've had forty-three student athletes since the beginning of the one-time transfer rule uh, leave the university, and thirty of them come in. Uh, and that, we're a little upside down there, but that's not uncommon because of the time. Uh, the student athlete leaves in August, it's time for us, it's hard for us to recruit, evaluate, and make sure that a right time of people to be governors, so we don't rush those, it owes in. Um, but we try to, we spend a lot of time understanding why student athletes are transferring. Our coaches are working to get student athletes to transfer again as well. As you see, we have thirty student, thirty transfer student athletes. We don't want to build our teams only on transfers, though. We're still want to be very rooted into the high school and the inner Alaska game. But to compete and to keep going, transfer portal is a part of the game. And student athletes are transferring after one year, one semester. It's amazing how fast this has gone. There are over two thousand student athletes in the transfer portal today uh, across the country. And so this is a new phenomenon that is a challenge that we gotta get our, get our hands on.
Gerald? You can ask a question now or wait a second. With respect to transferring, uh, how hands-on or hands-off do our coaches have to be in terms of, you know, recruiting somebody? Can they be in contact with a kid at another school while they're, while they're playing, or?
The student athlete from the other school would have to put their name, go to the compliance office, put their name in the portal.
Okay.
And declare, once the student athlete declares, then yes, we can get in contact. But just, you know, a lot of times you have, we're thinking about transferring, and their parents or somebody reaches out and we cannot communicate with them. They have to go ahead and officially put their name in the portal before we can get started. Why? So as we talked about, we've been talking to our student athletes, those forty-three that have left. We asked, why are they transferring? What's going on? Geography comes into play. They wanted, they thought they can go away from school for a while, and, but they want to be where they're, they're from, and they want to be closer to family, friends, and fans. And even when I was the director of recruiting at the University of Tennessee, that number, that has not changed. That has not changed since two thousand and one, when I started, uh, in collegiate athletics, and, and that comes into place. You really got to have a great environment to keep people who come from distance. Uh, they need for more exposure. They want to be on a national scale. Sometimes they want to play, uh, in a highly competitive environment that they feel like they can do at another place. We lost this year one of our, one of our best women's tennis student athletes that went out west to play in a better, to play in a better climate, in their opinion, and to play against some better competition. We, she won three OVC championships here, so couldn't really argue with her, and she wanted to do that when her fifth year, she already graduated. But we have those. Uh, they want to play for NCA burbs. Opportunities to play for championships is a huge piece. Uh, to quote Herman Edwards, you play to win the game. And the young people want to play, and they want to play against the best. And even when we uh, play games that we played last weekend against Ole Miss, young folks want to play those games. They want to see how they match up, and they want to play against best, and they want a chance to win championships, whether it's NCA basketball tournament, tennis, any other sport. Uh, that's what they want to do. Some of them have to go to bigger conferences that they feel provide better opportunities, because there are stigmas that are attached to, uh, certain, uh, stigmas attached to conferences. And so sometimes they want to go and play in a conference that people feel is better. We all hear it, uh, whenever it talks, SEC versus other five conferences. Well, it's the same mentality even at, at our level, at the mid-major level. You, they want to be a part of the best of the best. This is not just an Austin P. problem. This is a challenge for many institutions across this, uh, across the country. We talked about, I've talked to many different schools, and our numbers are not unlike some of the others, but these are the pretty consistent thoughts on why young folks leave one institution to go to the other. And then, yes.
Yeah, ask a question. Thank you, sir. So, um, the chart that you had slide before last, the number of students that had transferred in and transferred out, is that over, how many years is that over?
That's just the past year.
And of those that have transferred out, in the following chart, you showed the different reasons, but was there anything that those students had transferred out to follow a coach that may have been here that's not here anymore?
That, that happens sometimes. Not, it hasn't happened to us a lot. Um, we've had, uh, I know I've had one conversation with a student athlete that has done that in, in football, but I haven't, uh, there's not a lot of those. I see, I think you'll see more of those coming along. And the one I didn't put on the slide is, is the obvious one, that they don't think they're gonna play. Because kids get out recruited. You know, you, they were the number one player when they came out of high school, they came here, and then Coach Walden comes in with a different style or something and brings in somebody faster. Uh, and so that is also a part of the transfer. But, you know, as I look at it, I try to look for positives and opportunities, reasons to stay at Austin P. New facility upgrades across many of our programs, the Jenkins Indoor Facility. Uh, we got a gift to help us improve our training room and our nutrition room. Uh, we have multiple locker room upgrades that we've done recently, um, and the Row Academic Center. When you recruit student athletes today, they want to know where to go in the school. They want to know where they're sleeping, eating, and training. And who's gonna see them play? Those are the things that come into play, and we're trying to attack those. And we call them the enhancements to our student athlete experience. So number one, we got to retain good coaches. Uh, we got to have a strong social media presence. We've really ramped that up lately. And I'm sure many of you who own social media have seen that. Investing in mental health, the number one thing that our SAG committee and our student athletes have said to us is that we have to be better in the area of mental health. And that we are working hard, and Dr. LaCary and I have met with this, we're working hard to do that. Uh, investing in more nutrition, we have done that, has improved three hundred percent since when I first got here in two thousand and eighteen. And thanks to some generous folks, we're still doing that. And then the implementation of our new GOV three sixty program, which, uh, is a part of the total GOV concept, which means we're working holistically to build a student athlete all around. And so that's, um, those are some of the things we're doing to stay. And the next one is exploring other conference affiliations within our, within our region. So recently, we have received an invitation, uh, to join ASUN Conference. The ASUN, uh, is a university, is a conference faces to the south, which is an area, which is an area where our students and our student athletes come from, and we, we, that really excite us. It is a step forward. It is a challenge. If you look at the RPI of the, of the different sports in the ASUN, they, they are higher than where we are currently. But we don't run from those challenges. Timing is everything. As you see, the landscape of college athletics is constantly moving, not just at the power, not just at the power five level or the FBS level, but you see it all, you see it also in the FCS level and the mid-major level. And timing is everything. And so as we look at the future, as we look toward the future of Austin P. Athletics and Austin P. State University, this invitation is coming at the right time. Uh, when we speak of southern face institution, when you look at the states that we are, we're talking about with Atlantic Sun, Georgia, uh, Tennessee, Kentucky, Georgia, Alabama, Florida, Virginia, and you look, that's ten million homes that are represented in that footprint. Ten million opportunities to what, what we say fly to GOV to, for Maria and academic folks can talk about the great programs that we have here at Austin P. for us as athletics department. That's where we're recruiting. This is where our student athletes are coming from, and this gives them an opportunity to come in and, and play. Uh, come in and play, and their parents get to see them. We talked about that in the other slide, the reason people leave. Visibility, the ESPN Plus contract is a, is a great, uh, great venue there in ideal markets. When you start looking at Louisville, Nashville, Birmingham, Huntsville, Jacksonville, Orlando, those type of areas, it really provides us an opportunity right now that we, we don't have. It's a conference that is innovative and full of energy. The conversations with them have been uh, really good, and they have great plans. I know that one of the questions that always come, will come up is about the financial part of it. Uh, from a, well, just sort of spread out a little bit more, how will it impact your budget from a travel standpoint? We ran the studies. If you rent a bus, which we are mostly going to buses, if you rent a bus for a day, it costs about, whether you're going to Atlanta or you're going to Nashville, it costs you about the same thing. So we don't see, uh, a major change in our travel budget. Uh, the conference has committed to us, and if you look at it, we're going to be in some form with Todd and where we will play teams that we're used to playing. These people are friendlies. I got on friendlies because we play them now in competition. Obviously, Eastern Kentucky and Jacksonville State were former members of the Ohio Valley Conference. Uh, Bellermin, we just played last week. Uh, Central Arkansas, we played multiple times. North Alabama, we played them last week. Uh, Lipscomb, Kennesaw State. So we have familiarity with the members of the Atlantic Sun. Another part of it that's very important, we have forty-five thousand living alums in this footprint. And so it's very important for us to have a, to have a an opportunity to galvanize them, energize them, and reintroduce them to Austin P. You can see the governors play anywhere in the southeast, uh, with this move, and we're really excited about the potential here. There is a new ESPN Plus contract coming on, which will mean new revenue opportunities, uh, for the, for Austin P. in the Atlantic Sun. Also, right now, just the annual revenue that, that we receive, a part of being a part of a conference, is greater than what we currently receive as of today, before any announcement or any talk of expansion. Uh, so we have a great opportunity here. The last thing I'll leave with you is the total GOV concept. And the part of the total GOV concept that I want to talk about is that we expect success in everything that we do. We attack challenges with enthusiasm. This opportunity in the ASUN is a challenge. The opportunity to keep our student athletes from transferring is a challenge. The opportunity to defeat COVID and play, to play all of our games without having to forfeit is a challenge, but we're gonna run to it, and we're gonna run to it with enthusiasm. Why? Because we believe there's a way for us to perform at our fullest potential. Austin P. State University is on the cusp of something great. Austin P. Athletics is in the same fight, but you have to seize the moment. The moment has to be now to get us where we need to go. Enrollment challenges, we're gonna go where the people are. Uh, we want to get exposed on television, ten million homes. So this is our chance to reach our fullest potential, recruit the best and the brightest academically and athletically. This opportunity to move to the, uh, ASUN does that for us. So as we say, uh, in our place, it's time to get to work. And, uh, and I thank you for your time, uh, during this presentation. I'll take any questions that you have.
Great presentation, first of all, very impressive. So there were a couple of things in there that I don't recall seeing before the total Gov concept. Is that just, is that new or has that been around for a while and I just haven't noticed it?
Well, you start, I kind of just started that a couple of years ago. As a, as a catch paragraph, paragraph or phrase, it's our philosophy in athletics that we run around because we. I believe in enthusiasm, energy. And I believe that we know there's challenges, but we expect success in everything that we do. Whether it's in the classroom, whether it's socially, or whether it's, uh, whether it's on the competition field, so. That, that's where that came from.
And also the hashtag C red, is the whole school using that or is that your, is that the athletics?
We use it more athletically. It, it really, it when we, uh. When I got hired, uh, in my, in my opening press conference, I challenged us. At the University of the Athletic Department to see red, and I used a, the story of a bull and a matador. You always see, you know, the movie, uh, movies and shows where the matador is holding a red cloth. And the bull charges right away, but not with reckless abandon, doesn't ask questions, doesn't worry. Can't look left and right, but that red cloth come out, they go full speed ahead. And that's what I want for our athletics department. We don't hesitate. We take, we, we go and we go with a hundred percent effort. And so that day I challenged everybody to see red, and luckily we got a good marketing department, so they won't let it go away.
Great, advertising, great. Thank you.
Mary?
Yes, sir. It was a wonderful presentation, thank you. And since we have the wonderful benefit of having a student athlete as our student trustee. Howard, I'm sure that maybe athletes are going to wonder as well as the general university community on the timeline, should the board approve this today? Maybe you could comment on that.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we would, we would transition to the ASUN on July one, twenty twenty-two. So our next, our next academic calendar. Uh, we will be a part of the ASUN conference.
So how would that affect our scheduling of our games? Because I'm sure we have some games that are already scheduled out for the next two years at least.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, our non-conference games will not be affected. That was a large part of the conversations. Our, so our, our non-conferences, which are very important to us from a revenue generation standpoint. And a historical standpoint, they, they will be attacked with the scheduling of the ASUN for the next, the next cycle. And really, I will say this, the only ones that have advanced schedules like that is football. Uh, the rest of them are kind of eighteen months ahead in footballs, five years.
It'd be interesting, Mr. Chairman, to hear the president's thoughts at the appropriate time before we make a call, please.
Sure, if I, uh, if, if I may, thank you, uh, for the opportunity and thank you Gerald for the, uh, for the presentation that was, um. Uh, outstanding. Gerald and I have, um. Uh, been working very, very hard and thinking a lot about, uh, these, uh, these opportunities. Um, that the ASUN invitation presents. And I am convinced, uh, like Gerald, uh, that this is, uh, a wonderful opportunity for us. Um, and if you, um, and if you listened to my convocation address at the beginning of the semester. Uh, I said that, um. You know, you have to be ready, uh, for opportunity to knock. And when the, uh, when the opportunity comes by and knocks, you got to open the door and say yes. You have to take advantage of those opportunities because, like Gerald said. Uh, if you, uh, if you don't have high expectations of yourself. If you don't continue to push yourself and the institution forward, it will not move forward. Uh, and so this is a wonderful opportunity. Uh, it is an exciting way for us to elevate the brand. Elevate the awareness of Austin P throughout, uh, Tennessee as, and the southeast portion of the United States. Uh, in growing markets. Uh, Gerald mentioned some of them. I mean, and of course to be, uh, to be situated in a conference that, um. Uh, holds, uh, would hold both the Nashville and Atlanta markets, for example, is incredibly important. For us, we need to be able to show up in areas that matter for Austin P. Uh, it from athletics, from recruitment, uh, from engagement with our alumni. Uh, these are important things for the success of any university, and for us to have this opportunity is incredibly exciting. Uh, and so, um. As Gerald and I have been working, doing the research and engaging in, uh, a lot of different conversations. Uh, I only became more committed to this and, and more. Uh, impressed with, uh, with what the ASUN is doing. And so I am excited about this opportunity. And, uh, it, it represents a wonderful step forward for the entire university, not just the athletics department, certainly for athletics, but for the whole university.
Well, I'd like to say that this is an exciting opportunity, but we have also historically had a good partner with the OVC and good relationship. And have been good to Austin P based on the experience with them. As a student, as well as as a relatively new member of this board, so.
No doubt, this is, uh, this is running towards an opportunity rather than away from anything else.
Couple of comments, Gerald, uh, not necessarily. One is related to the, the potential change in conference, and that is that. My understanding from talking to you and others that the, the coaches are largely. Very supportive of this change. I, I wouldn't want to be making a change in conference if the coaches or. Athletes were, you know, opposed to it or, or, uh, not all in, so. Like that's the case with us, that, that our coaches are certainly excited about the possibility and, and are for that. And it also complements you on a couple of things. One, just based on your excellent report, as others have said. It's not lost on me that, that our athletes have a GPA that, as I understand it, is outpacing. The, the overall university, uh. In general, so your, your athletes, our athletes are doing better. That says a lot about you and, and your coaches and the, the folks that you're surrounding yourself with to help our student athletes. And the other thing is just congrats to you, Gerald, for. Uh, the quality and the level of coaches that you've been able to attract to Austin P. Obviously, the university. Uh, is an attractive place for those coaches, thanks to a lot of our people here today and, and that, that. Are in leadership of the university, but. Uh, you've just done a great job of bringing in the right kind of people that'll help with the total Gov's concept and will lead us to. I think, uh. Early and quick success in the, uh, ASUN, if that's the decision that we make. So congratulations and thanks for all you're doing to bring in some real quality folks. Um, other questions or comments for Gerald? Molly?
I just wanted to say that regardless of the decision made, um, as a student athlete, I've gotten to experience a lot of the different, um. You know, the different things that we have on campus for student athletes, and, um, we are very, very strong, especially, you know, academically and stuff and, um. Like whatever the decision is, I know that we will be supported fully, um, by our athletic staff, our administration, um. You know, we already have. New meeting preparations, you know, for questions and things like that. So I just want to say that, you know, thank you. Chris Harrison for just making sure that we're ready, like we're, we'll be ready to go regardless of the decision.
Thanks for that input, Molly. Thank you.
I, I just like to say that, you know, we've all kind of, particularly those five years witnessed the demise of the OVC. It just hasn't been going, you know, either going forward or going backward. There's no such thing as status quo. And I, I don't feel like the, you know, like the OVC, uh, in the NCAA tournaments, Gerald, we get one slot, and the OVC. You go to Atlantic Sun, you get two slots for. This is a, this is a conference that elevates our game. And we have been elevating the game of Austin P, both scholastically, uh, as well as. You know, we say that athletics are the front porch of this leadership, and I, and I thank, excuse me, pardon me, car business. This college, front porch of this college, you get people in the door. And just the exposure alone, uh, in a, in a larger conference, and you know, you look. And I think Gerald, thanks to you with the three dynamic coaches that, uh, that you've hired for, uh, men and women's, uh. Basketball and football, uh, you know, I hate to me, mention Murray State in, in this meeting. Murray State's, you know, their, their key to success has been is they get. Young coaches, young in their career, and they become superstars at Murray, then they get promoted somewhere else. Honestly, that's in our size, that's, that's our business model. Now at Austin P, and, uh, I think we will not only attract better student athletes, but we'll attract a better pool of coaches. Based on that we're moving, uh, that we're moving up. Is this. You know, Atlantic Sun is probably a five or six steps up from where we are in the OVC, and. Uh, we already see other teams that are, are leaving the OVC right now. And this is a perfect time. I mean, if we've got an invitation, it's not going to cost us any money to get in it. Uh, that's, that's incredible, but you know, this is upping our game. This is, you know, this is, you know, the. Governor Crane with a new board of trustees for, for our college, and this is something that, that we can do to put our stamp on Austin P to propel us in the future.
Thank you very much, Don. Other comments, questions? Uh, okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion that the board endorse the move to the Atlantic Sun Conference.
So move.
Yeah. Your second?
Second.
Uh, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to recognize, uh, thank you Gerald, very well. This time I'd like to recognize President LaCary to give his report and also report on any interim items.
Thank you Chair O'Malley. First, uh, I want to thank our outgoing chair and vice chair trustees, Mike O'Malley and Catherine Kanata. Thank you for your leadership and support of this university, particularly as it transitions. Due its status as one of the locally governed institutions in Tennessee. You know, leadership in uncharted, uncharted territories, that was challenging. Uh, but you helped ensure that, uh, the university kept moving forward. Personally, thank you for the support that I've had as, uh, that you've provided as I've transitioned into my role here. And so on behalf of the entire Austin P family, I want to present some tokens of our appreciation. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Now, the, uh, these are, uh, large roles, especially as, uh, as the board was, uh, brand new as you, uh, as you took over in, uh, in these leadership positions. And so. Uh, you, uh, you had a lot on your plates and you did a, a deft and skillful job guiding this institution forward. So thank you so much for. Uh, for all of your work. Congratulations to, uh, trustees Billy Atkins and Don Jenkins, and I thank you for stepping into the roles of. Chair and Vice Chair, and I really look forward to working together, uh, to keep this institution moving forward. So I'm, uh, I'm grateful for your leadership. Uh, regarding COVID nineteen, by this time, man, I really hope that, uh, I would not be needing. To keep making remarks about the university's response to COVID, but here we are. Uh, I've reestablished a COVID task force, uh, and we get daily updates about the situation on campus. As well as the situation in the, in Montgomery County. Uh, as of early August, here we are sitting around with masks. I've required masks to be worn indoors with just few exceptions. Uh, we've added capacity for some outdoor seating, thanks to, uh, the leadership of, uh, Eric Norman there. To help students, uh, spread out as they, as they eat, uh, in the dining facilities and things like that. Uh, we've also, uh, reestablished the tent out, uh, next to the, uh, the art and design building. Uh, to be able to hold certain classes out there, such as, uh, uh, those that are conducted in the School of Music. Uh, we've expanded our testing capabilities to include all of the members of households of faculty, staff and students as well. Um, and that was in direct response to recent, uh, pressures that, uh, local testing sites have been under. Uh, once we started to get word that the wait time in Montgomery County for a COVID test was, you know. Many, many hours that you'd have to stand in line. Uh, we decided to make the, uh, make our testing facility open to, uh, members of the household of our Austin P family. Uh, finally, uh, we are still administering the vaccine on campus. Uh, we're going to leverage, uh, athletics and have vaccination sites in the, uh, tailgating area starting, uh, in October. And, um, we're working on providing some incentives and vaccination challenges for, uh, members, uh, of the Austin P community to get vaccinated. Uh, regarding enrollment, we're working hard to rebound here, and in particular recover from the impact that COVID has had, uh, especially this past year. You know, that impact will be with us for a while, just like every other university. But the increase that we've seen in new students compared to last year is encouraging. We're getting back on the right path. Uh, of particular note, the number of new graduate students is substantially up compared to, uh, last year. Enrollment at our Fort Campbell Center is up compared to last year. And even our international student numbers have rebounded to close to pre-pandemic levels, and so that's exciting as well. Uh, we've rebounded in dual enrollment levels. These don't necessarily bring. Uh, tuition dollars to the university now, but that is an important recruitment pipeline for us. And so that was important to see those numbers. Return to, uh, pre-pandemic levels. Uh, AP Day is tomorrow, the first one of the fall, and so, um. Uh, I'll be with about three hundred prospective students and their families, uh, in the morning. Um, uh, to kick off the day, so I'm really looking forward to that. Uh, and we are already out of the gate very quickly, uh, in generating applications for next fall. Substantially outpacing application rates for actually the last two falls in a row now, so. Uh, I have all the confidence in Provost Cronly and her team. She's, uh, doing a very nice job. Uh, regarding academics, um, you know, I would, again, would like to congratulate Provost Cronly, but also Dean Karen Miesch and her faculty in the College of STEM. Uh, recently, the accreditation board for engineering and technology, AABET. Uh, accredited seven of our engineering technology programs. And next week on Monday, uh, a team from AABET will be back, uh, to evaluate accreditation for our BSE in engineering physics. The BS in computer information systems. Uh, the BS in commuter information technology and the BS in computer science. AABET is the gold standard for accreditation in engineering, so I'm particularly proud of the achievements of the College of STEM. Uh, happy to note that we are knocking it out of the park. Uh, regarding THEX student, uh, access and success standard in the performance funding formula. Uh, this standard is designed to provide incentives to increase the percentage of the number of, or number of students. From underserved populations, uh, that are graduating. We recently received notice from THEX. That we have received a perfect score on that standard. Uh, the student spotlight is on art student Katie Boyer, uh, who had an opportunity this summer to. Work as a research fellow alongside Austin P Gallery Director Michael Dickens. He helped discover a number of important photographs, uh, that we had of, in our collection from different famous artists. That have been stored unnoticed essentially, and there had never been anybody, uh, to, uh, to go through that material. Kate's work was supported by a recent endowment from, uh, Mark and Martha M. Rabby, uh, and the Austin P Center for Excellence. For the creative arts, uh, which contributed her work eventually to a month-long exhibition in the, in the gallery. Uh, on the strategic plan, I'm very excited about this. Earlier in the meeting, you heard, uh, an update about the, uh, launch of the process. Uh, combined with the work that's being done, uh, under, uh, Dr. Cronly's, uh, leadership in academic affairs. This is a significant undertaking for the university and certainly a very exciting one. Um, as I mentioned before, revisiting the mission and vision of the university will provide us an opportunity to. Solidify our purpose, prioritize and focus. Recalibrate our targets and our expectations and then strategically commit resources. Uh, and as you saw on the screen, my, my strategic pillars remain. Strategic enrollment management, academic strength, institutional vitality, our connection to the military and employee success. Uh, and I look forward to providing you all with, uh, with regular updates, uh, in between now and, and the next board meeting as we move through this process. In advancement, we've gotten out of the gate quickly to start this fiscal year, um, thanks to Chris, uh, Phillips's leadership. Substantially outpacing, uh, the number of, uh, individual donors at this point, as well as the number of gifts up, uh, over twenty percent. as well as the number of gifts, up, uh, over 20% in each category compared to last year already. So doing really, really well in that department. And I continue to meet alumni and donors through a lot of events, um, uh, both at Archwood and elsewhere. The academic, uh, affairs division and the advancement division have started to collaborate, yeah, collaboratively to, uh, share priorities and opportunities, uh, and, uh, and make sure that we're all on the same, uh, strategic page. Uh, and then in athletics, had a great turnout at the Alumni Tailgate Football Game in Chattanooga. Of course, it was great, uh, to come home with the win in that game. Uh, in Memphis, we had a good turnout, even though I had to alter the gathering format due to COVID. Had a good, uh, good open-air tailgate for the Ole Miss game. Our team played hard down there, very proud of their effort. Even though we didn't come home with the win, we sure moved the wall. And, uh, and, uh, it was, uh, it was an exciting opportunity for those, uh, for those players. Uh, and of course, the significant announcement is, uh, the upcoming move to the A-Sun Conference. Thank you for your support in this move. Uh, this does put us in a new, uh, and a set of expanding markets in the South where we do recruit most of our student athletes. It's home to many of our alumni. Uh, this move will bring more attention, uh, to the things that we're doing, both athletically, but also academically. Uh, because it puts us in markets where our brand matters. Uh, and it will bring important name recognition to the university. So this is critical for recruiting students, whether they're athletes or not. The opportunity to move to the A-Sun is one we could not pass up. And so thank you again for that support. Conference will challenge us on and off the field, uh, in competition and in academics, and we're ready for that challenge. I'm thrilled that we're taking this next step. I'm excited, uh, about Gerald's, uh, leadership and I'm grateful for your support. Finally, in conclusion, your packet includes a list of contracts and agreements that have been executed uh, and state building commission actions that have occurred since, uh, our last board meeting. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Licari. Thank you for, for your, uh, hitting the ground running and marching for all the leadership you've provided in this challenging year, uh, as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, as a reminder, our next regularly scheduled meeting will take place December 3, 2021. And with that, I move to the meeting adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
An enthusiastic second for, uh, Steve Atkins, and has moved and seconded the meeting adjourned on my chair. Those in favor, say aye. Just have it, the meeting is adjourned.